If anyone is watching, they can email.
Right.
B Coker.
Yep.
At m t healthy dot org. I can check too, or J Wolf at m t healthy dot org.
All right, well, we can come back around. Oh, here it is. Now I'm live.
And we can always go back to public input if somebody has a question. Mayor's report, Mr. Wolf.
Really just two things. Bill and I toured the Healthcare Connection just last week, and they are fully operational now, including, you know, with the dentistry. And I was very impressed at how big it was. I know a few of you toured before.
Yeah, I did. Yeah, the dentist dentist part is amazing.
It's amazing.
It is.
I was very impressed with it. And what's really impressive is they're already expanding. They didn't finish the bottom, but they purposely had it built so that they could expand in the future. And they're already building a negative, what do they call it? Negative something chamber, so that someone who is highly contagious with something like COVID can go into this room, and the ventilation is set up so it sucks it out. They're already building that in the basement, and they're going to have that operational. So they're already expanding upon their original construction.
That's great.
Yeah, and already kind of expressed interest in Bill that they're looking for future expansion opportunities. So it was really surprising, really surprising to me how great it's going.
And what kind of areas are they thinking of expanding?
Not quite sure.
I mean, I just think maybe, you know, as their need for just capacity, because right now, they're just on the entry level floor when you enter, you know, but there's a whole under level that there's room for expansion, so, you know, more offices, more doctors. Right? Was kind of the, my thought.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, so.
Then even interest in possibly growing outside that building, so it's, I was impressed. And they are a COVID vaccine location, so you can call up there. They will take clients, any of their regular clients, or anyone from the community. So that is a place, once you're eligible, you can call to get an appointment there. They are in town. Another thing that's terrific that I don't, I'm sure they said it, but I don't think I realized it about Healthcare Connection is part of their business model of being a community-based health center, is that they try to employ local residents as well. And they are looking for dental hygienists right now, and they would love to have dental hygienists from our city or school district. So if you hear of anyone that's in that field looking for a job, they are hiring right now. And they do have four right now employees, I believe, that are local. We met one of them while we were there, so it was great to see that not only are they, you know, providing health needs for our community, but also employing our residents. And then the other thing, we just had a, oh, Planning Commission meeting last night about Vibe Inc., and Bill's going to fill you in more on that in his report.
Any questions for the mayor? City manager's report, Mr. Coker.
Well, I'll jump right in on that one. The, as Jamie said, we met last night. We had an in-person meeting, which was the first we've had in a long time. Nobody from the public showed up, but the two, the applicant and one of their representatives and their attorney. And it went well. I was able to get the resolution on your desk tonight. It's just so that you can see what's coming. This will ultimately be an attachment to, a resolution from council. Just a refresher, we haven't done a Planning Commission in a while. Really, the Planning Commission on a conditional use just provides recommendation to council to approve the conditional use request for occupancy. And with typically conditions, doesn't have to, you know, like I said, we have three choices. You can approve, deny, or approve with conditions. The three conditions that were placed in the recommendation were hours of operation, mainly on the closing end. That's pretty consistent with the last three tattoo parlors that we, that we, that we recommended for approval, and council approved, and that's 10:00 PM. We also added in there some language we've added before, because it's kind of the chicken or the egg, right? They, they can't get their county licensing and health department approvals until they get occupancy from us, so we put in there that, you know, then they'll, you know, once we grant them occupancy, they'll meet all county licensing requirements. And then the third thing that was added in there was be no loitering outside the store. So those are the three conditions. So the next step will be to have a public hearing before our next council meeting, which again, technically, if anybody wanted to come, they could. We can probably, after the public hearing, probably just ask them to move, to leave, to leave, and we can continue our business so that we can kind of continue to try to keep in a minimal impact. So that's that. Again, nothing to act on tonight, just trying to keep everybody in the loop of what's coming. I think our law director will come. Come and probably go over some things as well, because like you guys know, there was some pending litigation with this, you know, that we really couldn't discuss, but that was part of it. And he'll be here to discuss or answer any questions.
I do just want to add that we said 10:00 PM, you know, is the close of business. He did, the owner himself actually said that his plan is just to do appointments from 8:00 to 8:00. So that, that two-hour buffer would be to finish up, you know, any tattooing or piercing that's going on. So he won't take appointments after 8:00. It's not that he would have to come in at 10:00 and then, you know, finish later. He would be done by 10:00.
Does he have other business, business in that building?
No.
He's only doing tattooing?
No, right now, he has.
I'm sorry, in that storefront, hair braiding, I was thinking of the bigger complex, hair braiding, piercing, and tattoo.
And he's going to stop all of that by 10:00 o'clock? Close the building?
Yes.
I mean, close the, close the store?
Yep. Because, because what will happen is they currently have an occupancy permit to operating, to operate the hair braiding, because that didn't need a conditional use, and it met zoning. So they were granted occupancy for hair braiding only. And we discussed this a little bit last night. So what will happen is there'll be a new occupancy permit, you know, that will, that will be submitted, which is a conditional use occupancy with those conditions. So it will kind of be all encompassing. Ray and I met today with the Rumpke Regional Representative to kind of go over the contract and continue to talk about that. You know, we're kind of treating this as a, the old route supervisor, Buck Rumpke, who's had this route for many, many, many years, has retired, and his son BJ has taken on. But we, we met first with, with the regional person, and then we've scheduled a meeting for, with the route supervisor and the ops manager to just kind of hopefully get everybody on the same page, talk about hopefully a better process of, of communication on missed pickups, you know, or whether they're, they were just missed because they didn't, they weren't out, or whether there was a reason. We're trying to come up with a plan so that we have some reporting by, by midday on the day of pickups of why it happened, you know, and kind of what a plan is. So discussed, they're getting ready to send out a letter letting everybody know about the waste, new waste haulers that will come out. And in a separate letter, going to go out just for your information to a lot of the larger family, multifamily locations, their experience. They just went through this with Merrimott. They delivered, you know. So let's say an eight family will be charged, you know, for eight units, your eight, eight waste haulers. A lot of times, they don't need that many, you know. And so they'll work with them to try to minimize what's going on with that. Tell them, the letter's going to state, hey, you're entitled to these, this number, but to try to minimize the, the, the impact of going back and picking up, because maybe a 10 unit won't need all 10. They're going to try to upfront that. So it's not a, it's not a ploy from Rumpke to try to make, and I don't want it to be a negative thing. It's, it's they're going to communicate just with multifamily locations. So that was another thing that was discussed. So that will be a separate letter to go directly to the property owners with that, so. And everything else is, is coming into place. You know, we've sent out information that this is coming. And not surprisingly, it's been, you know, it's been received with mixed reviews. It's, it's too hard to, to, you know, gauge with everybody. But, you know, some people are happy about it. Some people are, you know, we've had examples of, I just bought a new, new, new one from them. I've, you know, you know, some of them said, hey, that's great. It's good. I bought one, but I need a second, you know, all these kinds of things. So, so we'll, we're hoping that we'll get this rolled out with as few hiccups as possible. So then, so tonight, you do have a first reading for the, for the, for the, for the contract, so.
Question.
Uh huh.
So when I looked over the contract, it talked about that if there were handicapped people or disabled folks, that they could get help getting them out. Does the residents know that?
The, no.
In the contract?
I don't.
That they would.
Okay, I'm not familiar with that in the contract.
It's, I, I think it's in section four.
Okay.
So.
I mean, typically, that's, that's not been, been the case, but I'm, you know, yeah, I'll have to look at that. We, we focus more on the sections about missed pickups, how to handle communication, simply having, making sure you have a broom, a shovel, and a rake on the truck for pickup of trash, different things like that. So I'm not aware of anyone doing that now, but I'll take a look at that.
And they were at my house at 6:57 this morning. I thought they probably knew we were looking at the contract. They weren't there at 4:00.
Yeah, and it is clearly 7:00 A. to 7:00 P., you know.
Is that discussed at all? Because they've come, a couple months ago, they were like 2:30 in the morning.
Yeah, real early.
Yeah. I mean, when those things happen, we just need to know. I mean, don't hesitate. Email us, you know, we'll follow up.
And I know one of my neighbors works at a hospital, the night shift, and he usually pulls his can out when he gets, but not at 2:30 in the morning.
Yeah, yeah. No, you know, we even talked, and it was interesting, and I, you know, we have unlimited garbage, right? On occasion, you know, especially in the fall during leaf pickup, sometimes people will put out 40 bags, 20 bags, whatever the number. Sometimes they're not all picked up. You know, and, and I take a pretty strong position on, hey, it's unlimited. You're either going to pick it up this week or next week. Why'd you leave that? People have to move it back, you know, and they, and we did get into some good discussions of saying, there's capacity on the trucks, right? And, you know, he said, most of these drivers get it. They know they're going to have to get it. But if they're, if they can't, if their, if their truck's getting to a point, and they've got to finish picking up the rest, a lot more in the town, then, you know, they aren't going to be able to even close the back of the thing. And I said, well, then, you know, my position on that would be then, then come more often, and don't, don't, don't get to that capacity, but if it doesn't happen. But I said, look, you know, I, I understand that, but if you would communicate with us and say, look, there were 40, we were at capacity, we're going to be back the next day, leave them out, we'll get them. That's the communication that we're looking for, and we can, we can live with something like that, you know, because we get it. And, you know, because they said, well, you know, drive there, we're close, just go dump and come back. Because usually every day, it's a 45 minutes, an hour wait just to get to, to dump the truck. So, you know, so, you know, it was, it was a good back and forth of understanding, but what we're really, really stressing is just, you got to communicate with us. You know, you got to communicate. Let us know what's going on. Let us know, you know, if, if you don't pick up something, you should put a tag on it. Let us know what that is. Again, we can, when we get that call, we're not tracing you down, come back, oh, yeah, this was the issue. So that, that was a real, real strong focus on what we're trying to accomplish.
Because one other thing, a couple times that I've tried to call ahead to say, hey, I'm putting out this this week, tell me how you want it, you know, and everything. And, you know, sometimes they didn't even know we had unlimited pickup. They would say, well, you're going to be charged. I go, no, I'm not going to be charged. And poor, I had to call poor Ray, and Ray would have to call him, because when you called there to just give them a heads up that you were putting something out, or you knew you had to call and tell them, they were like, well, no, we don't pick that up, or, well, you're going to be charged extra. We don't do that. I'm like, no, no. You know, so that's really frustrating, because I was trying to tell them ahead of time.
Right. You know, they were talking to us, there's, you know, I think the person that's specific to our, our community works from, that's going to be most familiar with our contract, works from 5:00 AM to 1:00. So, and then after 1:00 o'clock, they still answer calls, but it might be a person that's actually responsible for Northern Indiana, you know what I mean? And, and, you know, a lot of times, the, you know, when people are more familiar with subscription rates, that's what's going to happen. You know, we talk about this a lot. That's another example. When you have a subscription, you're going to be paying $10 for a, for a larger pickup, those kinds of things. So, so, yeah, I mean, it was a good conversation and learning. We're not, we're not giving them a pass, but we want to know more. We want to, we want to communicate more. We want to be able to communicate back to the resident. This is what happened. You know, we'd like, you know, we'd like to have it. Why wasn't my garbage picked up? Well, we got it. We got an email on it. You know, there's a tag on there. You should be able to go out and read the tag and understand why it wasn't picked up.
Yeah.
We'll see.
And there were times when I put stuff out, and I thought the junk man would get it, and they did. So I would call them early, you know, and they go, thanks for calling, because then they knew they didn't have to come by and get it.
Right, right.
Try to work with them.
Yep. Just a quick update, and Keisha, you can, oh, go ahead, Joe.
I do have one question. So did they mention anything about their fuel cost and their fuel savings with the recent gas prices and maybe passing some of that on?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, there is, there is actually in the contract a fuel surcharge that they can add on. And I don't know what it is off the top of my head. Obviously, that hasn't, it hasn't happened lately.
But that could be reduced too, is in there.
Yeah.
I don't think there's a bottom side to the contract of that.
Well, they did ask us last year to, to give them a surcharge, and we declined.
Right, right, we did.
But this is going to be automatic in the contract now?
It is. It's already in there. I don't, I just know in looking at the bill, there's some months there's a fuel charge, and some months there's not.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's pretty well spelled out in the contract.
Okay, if, if gas price goes over a certain thing? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any more questions?
Excuse me.
So again, tonight, all we need to do is take a first reading, and we can continue the conversation. If you've got more questions, get with us. Hopefully, we'll have met with the route supervisor and the ops manager before the next meeting. I can update you on our conversation with that.
Will we be putting out any more communication to the citizens to let them know? I mean, I didn't know. I mean, I'd just pick up the phone and call Rumpke if I had a problem, where Ray has this great database, and, you know, and I think on the early stuff, and by the contract, if they're early, three times within 90 days, there's a, I mean, there's a.
Surcharge.
Surcharge on them. But if he doesn't know about it, we.
Right.
You know, he's, he's our data guy, and he's really good at it.
Right. Now, there is a, there's a letter going out. You know, you always, I don't know if it's going to get specific. Sometimes we're careful on what we're trying to, you know, you throw, the letter's going to discuss waste toters. Again, reiterate with what's going on, recycling and changes with that. You know, but a second letter, we could, you know, you know, another thing we could do, and we haven't done this in a while, is I know we used to be able to put messages on the, on the water bills, although, again, if it's going to the business property owner, that person's not going to know it. So we can, yeah, maybe, maybe on the website. If you have a problem with Rumpke, call. That's what we all, you know, we communicate it that way, but whether everybody knows it, I don't, I don't, I don't know.
Thank you.
Two things, just update on the fire department, and Keisha, you can jump in. I know you've been part of it. We, the, the first four were interviewed. Three of them were recommended for hire. They have to take a psychological and, and the physical for the state pension. And then once that's done, those, those folks will be brought on. The, the second round of seven, I think there were some challenges trying to get the committee together and get that, that, you know, and get that panel together to interview the next seven. But we feel pretty confident that we are, we're going ahead and doing the backgrounds on them to try to speed at least that part of the process up. And so things are continuing to move, move forward, and we're pleased so far. I don't know if you, you want to add anything more?
We've got two more dates set up for interviews, February 17th and March 10th. So things are kind of moving right along, and those are our last applicants, so.
Right.
Hopefully, we'll have more to share then, but hopefully, we'll get through these interviews, and we'll be moving some of these people onto the next part of that process.
March 10th?
Mm-hmm, and February 17th.
That was the challenge with getting the committee together.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you know, when you're trying to pull so many people in and different things. But I, again, you know, I mean, I know we all want to move this thing forward, right? But I mean, I think we also want to make sure, you know, this is hiring seven full-time people. We want to make sure we're crossing every T and dot and every I. And I know, and again, the, you know, the last thing with, you know, we've not done psychologicals before, and folks, you know, that, that was, that's the last step that we're doing with the next three. So at least get them on here in fairly short order. It's the next group that will take a little bit of time, especially with the March 10th.
You're not saying one interview on the 17th and one interview on the 10th?
No, there's going to be three or four.
Several, several, okay.
Yeah, yeah, of the seven, those are the two dates, so I don't know if it's three and four, four and three.
I thought you meant just two interviews in the next.
No.
Five weeks.
No, no. We have them scheduled for February 17th, and if I, I think there's three scheduled on the 17th, and then four scheduled on the 10th, if I remember correctly.
Thank you.
Yes. And like you said, it is a process, and we're trying to make sure that we take not only our time to make sure we have the right employees, we're taking the time to make sure we go through the process and make sure we get the best, because these will be people that are going to be here full-time, not only working for the city, but representing the city and being a part of our community. And we want to make sure we have the right people in that position.
Absolutely.
And the second piece of that, and Steve and I talked about this in great detail, and I want to, I want to share it with you, and we understand it, because I'm sure it could take some negative connotations with it, but the, the chief of North College Hill and Chief Lawson are discussing creating, now, this is the key, a dispatch district, not a, not a joint fire district. We know where that went, right? But, but they really feel, especially with how close we are, the way, the way the dispatch protocol works right now is that if we, if our first squad's out, they start a process of, of sending out mutual aid requests, right? And, and what the protocol is right now is if North College Hill's first squad, primary squad is out, they don't even call. They go and they look, is, is the township, is their, is their primary squad out? If it is, they go on. So I mean, it's starting to get, we're getting to Wyoming and green, if, if everybody has their primary out. What we're asking, what we're going to do is create this district where it says that once the, if, 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 if we're in need of a, of a mutual aid run, and North College Hill's primary is out, but their secondary is there, they'll go to the secondary so that it's much more closer proximity, and vice versa, right? If, if, if North College Hill's primary is out, we're out, they get another call. Instead of starting to bounce around to these other communities farther out, we'll be able to go there. So it's, it is a possibility to pick up extra runs and potential revenue on that side. I think it makes sense. I know we, I know there's still my, you know, a little bit of, you know, disappointment, whatever we want to say with that, but, but I think we want to try to do what's, we got to look beyond those things and try to do what's best for the community. And let's face it, if you're, if you're, if you happen to be that secondary call, and, you know, they're coming from Green Hills, and we really need it, that's, that's not, it's not going to happen until we, we're fully up and running the paramedic side of things. So it's just something, but I know how these things can get, oh, I hear you guys are creating another district. What do you mean? You know, no, it's just a dispatch district, dispatch, dispatch protocol on how we want to respond, so. Again, think about it. It's nothing that's happening tomorrow, but it's something that the chiefs are discussing and wanting to get in place, and I, I, you know, I yield to their expertise with that, so.
It's nice that they're, they want to do that.
Yeah, right.
We don't have that hurdle to overcome as far as anything like that.
Right, exactly. I think it makes a lot of sense.
Will Springfield Township be involved in that?
No. I mean, and it's, I mean, you know, again, if, if it so happens that, that both of our squads are out, and both their squads are out, then mutual aid will still happen. But, but the thing that you, that you run into is that there, you know, if, if we were, if we rely, where their primaries, if they're coming to, out of like, up by their second, up by Burlington, they're, they're a lot further away. So it's, it's a matter of just timing of getting people in, you know, getting an ambulance to respond in a quicker fashion than waiting on whoever's primary is available. So just the district will be between us and North College Hill. The mutual aid won't change otherwise. So the, I don't know if you saw this piece of paper. It's just hot off the presses.
Does that mean we are, or we might?
Well, that's a good question. I put the bad news up front, right? And if, you know, sometimes we, you know, sometimes you're on, you're the beneficiary, sometimes you're not, right? I don't want to say luckily, but Woodlawn and Delhi Township's application was thrown out. So because of that, we were able to move up and get our project funded. Now.
Hamilton Avenue.
Hamilton Avenue. The, we don't, one of, this is, this is a rare event, and I don't, we don't, Jennifer's not 100% sure if Woodlawn and Delhi could appeal this to OPWC. This is our local review board that, our District Two, that made its determination. And it wasn't minor. I mean, I think Delhi omitted a complete page on the application, and Woodlawn was discrepancies in, in costs. I mean, these are, these are big, and I don't think they want to set precedence of, you know, Jennifer's told me, I guess, this is, this, she's seen it happen a few times, and even when it happened before, it was even less of a, of a, you know, mistake type of, type of thing. But one of the things I think is very telling on this page, only two projects, number seven in Cincinnati and number 13 in Norwood, requested less than, you know, or applied for without, less than a 50% match.
Yeah.
Every other project on there was at 50%. And, you know, it just, it just, this pendulum is swinging, right? For years, we set, we pondered the 20 versus 30, right? I think we, we realized we got to go to 30. But it just kind of shows other things that are going on here now. Our Hamilton Avenue project, which is a huge, you know, half a million dollars, thrilled that we're getting that. We had, we had less options outside of this, you know, of, of covering that cost. So I think it's a good, great thing, even though the project's not even going to go bid to bid for another year. You know, we've, we've secured over a million dollars, and, you know, with really no cost to the residents. So that's, I mean, with no, you know, local cost, we've been able to leverage that. So, so anyway, that's good. You know, I did ask one other question, and, you know, with the Madison Avenue project, which was our second priority. I talked to Jennifer today, and I said, had that been our number one priority with a 30% match, where would, where would we have came in? And we would have come in right above Forest Park. So there is a little bit of good news there that, but again, man, we're treading right on the border, you know, with these things, so.
We did go 30%.
But we, but it wasn't our one priority.
Oh, I see.
See, now, making it a priority is, is another big factor, you know. So, so that, you know, that's still, that's kind of where we all usually end up anyway. So it's just something for us to think about the next, next time around. You know, again, we did, we were denied our, our appeal on the, you know, where they had taken Madison and actually improved the condition rating on that. And so, so anyway, it's, you know, it is what it is. The committees, I'm not trying to badmouth, the committees got to do what they got to do, and, and it happens, and they clearly state that from year to year. Just because you were rated this the previous year doesn't mean that's where it's going to come in. So it happens, and, and it is, so. But it's good news. I mean, that's a big, that's a big project news. So we just got that information in. And just to tip of the hat, I mean, the snow has been just annoying for, for everybody, but especially our street department, because, I mean, I think there's been a couple nights that they've spent as much time here on a, that we would have spent on a four or five-inch snow, and it's just these little ongoing snow stops, snow stops. Frustration, and I know the guys have done a great job, you know.
Yeah.
Comes with the territory, always a few complaints, but very few and far between. And I just know Greg's, and the guys are dragging, so I'm just thanking them for, for staying, sticking to it and getting everything cleaned off, so. That's all I have tonight.
Any more questions for Bill? Okay, on to ordinance and resolutions. We don't have any second readings on ordinance, but we do. We don't have any second readings on ordinance, but we do have a second reading on a resolution. And it's Resolution 21-1157, Resolution declaring nuisance and ordering abatement. Any discussion?
I will make a motion to adopt ordinance 21 dash, what did you say, 1957?
1157.
1157.
It's resolution.
Resolution.
A resolution, yeah.
Sorry.
Mr. Redding made a motion to adopt. Should I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Sheets. We'll call it.
Mrs. Lingo?
Aye.
Mrs. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
Mr. Redding?
Aye.
Mrs. Dosa?
Aye.
Mr. George?
Aye.
Mrs. Sheets?
Aye.
Motion was adopted, seven to zero. Then we have a new resolution, the planning commission, that's next, right?
No, that, that's just, that was just on your desk tonight.
Oh, okay.
No, no, we don't, we don't need to. I just wanted to give everybody the heads up with that.
Okay, okay. All right. First reading of ordinances. First one is ordinance 21-1938, An Ordinance Authorizing the City Manager to Execute an Agreement Between the City of Mount Healthy and Rumke for Collection, Transportation, and Delivery for Disposal or Processing of Solid Waste and Recyclable Materials Generated in and Collected from Residential Units, Residential Unit Equivalents, Municipal Facilities, and During Special Events. God, I can't read this.
I think you're reading the wrong one.
Yeah, it's a wrong one, 21.
It is?
1938.
Yes, you're reading 21, 1940, we're on 38.
Sorry, do I have to read it again?
No, that was just 21, 1940.
Okay, it was in the wrong order. I apologize. So 21, 1938, right?
Yeah.
Okay. An ordinance reappointing members to the Springfield Township Joint Economic Development Zone One Board of Directors and declaring an emergency.
I have a question.
Ms. Sheets?
It looks like all three people have been on since 2014. Do we change those ever?
Are you volunteering?
Yeah, would you like to be on the board?
Because we could.
It's really a question, I'm not volunteering for work. I just, I, I just kind of think we need to have, I'm, I'm really for term limits, and here's a term limit.
I know that, I think by, by the contract, I, the administrators have to be on it.
And that makes sense.
Yeah, and so, but yeah, anybody else?
The meetings are typically during the day, correct?
Meetings, I have to get up early to go to my nine o'clock meeting. We struggle to make the meeting last 10 minutes. And it's quarterly, although we haven't had, we only had.
We had two this year, I think.
March and December?
December, yeah.
You know, because of COVID, we didn't have the two other quarterly meetings, but.
I mean, are there any credentials that people need to, the members have to have to be on council or in the administration or anything like that?
I, I mean, I don't, I mean, it, it just so happens that I will have to, I, I, it's been a while. I don't know if the contract spells out that it should be a member of the community, a member of the, of the council and administrator. We'd have to look at that. And we can take a first reading on this and, 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 you know, discuss it further at the next time. But if that being the case, then yes, the credential, it's not so much credentials, but, you know, Ray, Ray is a resident, and it's just, he so happens to work here, so it's nice because he can help with communication, and he's, and he's on the tax side of things. So he, he sees and can get reports and do different things. So that, that, that's an advantage of him being on there. Having a member of council, I think, is just, just probably good, good, you know, business. But it doesn't, if somebody else wants to take it on, I don't think Bob would, would hesitate. And again, being on council, you don't have to have an accounting background or those kind of credentials, you just have to be on council.
Some of these committees are hard to fill when we have these intergovernmental ones because they're during the day. So it's nice when we have a retiree on council that can, can and will step up to do these things, and Bob has played that role more than once.
Ms. Sheets is a retiree also.
Yeah.
Honestly, that's a lot of times what it comes down to, people that are free during the day.
Well, I mean, I just, I think we need to meet the requirements of, you know, whatever. And I certainly appreciate, I'm not saying any of this, these folks are bad or you're doing a bad job. My whole point is, everybody gets to have the fun, you know? So, and I think you gain knowledge maybe, you know? And if we can encourage people to gain knowledge, we all are better.
For sure.
I would like you to look into that, please.
What is council's wishes?
Look into what?
To see what we're required to have as far as.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I will, I will confirm that, but I know, I do, I'm pretty sure it's elected fish, and I think it's a person from the community. So if council wants to give up to see, I, I would, I would argue against taking Ray off, just, I think it's a perfect fit. Now, if we didn't have that, I mean, I just think the fact that he's engaged with Rita, he knows the reporting process, he can, if there is something going on, you know, he, he's aware of it. I think he's a value, that, he brings that value to it. So my thought would be if anybody else, if council wants to switch it up, that's great, to your point, get, get different people in there to get more knowledge of what's going on, so. But, I mean, if somebody really wanted to from the resident, from the community, that wanted to, to take in Ray, I'm sure Ray wouldn't have an issue with it either, you know? But, yeah, I mean, but I'll confirm that that's the, the requirement of the.
Thank you.
And we can discuss it, so we can just take a first reading on it tonight.
So first reading for ordinance 21, 1938.
Okay.
No, 1939. All right, next ordinance, 21-1939, An Ordinance Assessing Cost of the Removal of Litter, Rubbish, and Garbage and Declaring an Emergency. Discussion.
Oh, there's only one on the list today.
I know.
I, I do have a question for Bill. I'm sure we all got, received a letter concerning the, the receptacle, right? Was there any, was there anybody else or anybody that called the city or?
You're on the wrong one, Joe.
You're on the wrong one, Joe.
1939.
1939, we're talking.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. I'm in a hurry to get there. Yep.
I answer your question when we get to there, Joe.
Okay, that sounds great.
We want to declare this an emergency?
Nope.
That's what it says, yeah.
I don't think it'll matter if we get it down there this week or the next time because bills aren't going to go out again for a while.
Right, the only reason why we do that is, is that if it were to sell between now and, and then, then it, it has the potential. And I'll share a little side note with you guys. We, we, we acquired property through the, through, through the port, and we were caught in that, where we assessed it, but because they do such a fast track on the, on, on us getting the, the property that's in tax foreclosure, it didn't take care of it. So we actually assessed ourselves, and we, we paid it and we'll get it back. So that, that's an example of how it can happen. That, that's more of the reason why we do it than that.
Yeah, that's what I thought, because when you, we put a declared emergency, there's a reason for that.
Uh huh, right, yeah, so.
Because it'll show an assessment, you know, future assessment on the tax bill.
Right, only if we have.
If you get it down there soon enough, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. That's, that's the only reason why we put a rush on those. So, but it's up to, it's up to council.
But it's council's pleasure.
Isn't this the property we dealt with years ago?
This is, isn't this our, I was just looking at it.
With the.
The toilets, wasn't that Mr.?
Yeah.
Is it the one with the building that was in the back?
I don't blame you.
No.
No, he was, he was a character that lived in that house. Remember, instead of putting flower pots out, he put out.
Oh, toilet, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, toilets.
I don't, I don't know what we cleaned up on it, and he, he no longer owns this property, so.
I make a motion to suspend the two reading rule?
Moody made a motion to suspend.
Mr. George?
I second.
Mr. George?
Oh, Mr. George, second. Roll call.
Mrs. Lingo?
Aye.
Mrs. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
Mr. Redding?
Aye.
Mrs. Dosa?
Aye.
Mr. George?
Aye.
Ms. Sheets?
Aye.
Okay, suspension of the two reading rule is passed seven to zero.
Oh, for goodness sake, it's not 30. Make a motion to adopt ordinance 21-1939.
Okay, Mr. Redding made a motion to adopt.
I'll second that.
And Mr. Parsons, second. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Lingo?
Aye.
Mrs. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
Mr. Redding?
Aye.
Mrs. Dosa?
Aye.
Mr. George?
Aye.
Ms. Sheets?
Aye.
Ordinance 21, 1939, adopted seven to zero. Now I got to read this long one again.
Just take a deep breath.
All right, ordinance 21, 1940, An Ordinance Authorizing the City Manager to Execute an Agreement Between the City of Mount Healthy and Rumke for Collection, Transportation, and Delivery for Disposal or Processing of Solid Waste and Recyclable Materials Generated in and Collected from Residential Units, Residential Unit Equivalents, Municipal Facilities, and During Special Events.
To answer your, your question, yes, Joe, that we've got a mix, like I mentioned, of people happy, people, you know, you know, the case of this person where they're, they don't need that size. You know, what Rumke, what they encourage today is to let, you know, because it becomes very much a nightmare of, of this one gets it, this one doesn't, you know? Let's distribute them, and if it becomes a problem, they'll come and pick it up. If they don't need it, if it's no room, you know, they will, they will pick it up. So, but again, the, the, like, I think what this person is saying, the grandfather, that, that, that in itself becomes an administrative nightmare. You know, to try to, this one does, this one doesn't, and the next person moves in, you know, those kinds of things. So, I mean, we discussed this a little bit the last time, there's not a perfect one-size-fits-all.
So if they come and pick it up, though, they're still the $1 fee, whether they use it or not.
Right. You know, we, we, there was another one today, I know, that Ray was talking about, and the guy was happy, he just bought one, and he wondered if he would be able to use that container, and he was glad because he wanted another one, you know? So it just depends on who you, who you talk to, you know? You know, there will be the question, you know, and again, I, you know, at least in my mind, the perspective of this is, is not only of a convenience for, for some folks, it is, it's, it's, it's an effort to try to minimize trash in the neighborhood because we know and see a lot that there's cans without lids, there's bags, there's different things. That's, that's kind of the drive, bigger driver behind this, at least in my mind. But, you know, people have asked the question, am I, will you pick up my garbage if it isn't in that 96 count? Yeah, they will, you know? But again, we're stressing, you know, just in our ordinance that we have, you're supposed to have a can with a lid, you know? I mean, so again, we, we're going to, you know, tell people, but we don't want you putting out a bag because animals, raccoon, it just becomes a nightmare. So that's what we're trying to do, but we understand, you know, I mean, Ray was giving an example of, of, of an elderly person that, that had to take it up and down steps, and she was like, I can't, there's no way. And so, you know, we, we understand that some of those, and if, you know, they want those to come and be picked up, they, they can be. So, but we, what Rumke is asking is, get it, try it, if it doesn't work, we'll come and get it anytime.
Yeah.
That seems to be reasonable. Yes?
So on the page 48, so it's the last, it's the back page, where it has the Exhibit A bid forms. So at the bottom, it talks about one and two. The contractor shall provide carryout collection service at the same rate as curbside collection service to any resident with a physical disability which limits or impairs the ability to walk as set forth in Ohio Revised Code. So, but that one is in the middle column, so does that?
Well, I think that you would have, that you have to pay for that service. The contractor shall provide carryout collection service at the same rate.
As curbside collecting.
To any. Okay, so if, if, set forth in the Ohio Revised Code, section.
Yeah, and I haven't looked up the section to see what that is. I would assume.
I'll look it up now.
You know? With part of the Disabilities Act. But what my concern is, it's under the three years with the possibility of plus one, plus one. It's not under the column with five years. So I'm one, I want to, want, my question is, is that included in the five years contract?
Well, my guess is if this is set forth in the higher revised code, it, it doesn't matter. Right? I mean, if it's a requirement by the higher revised code that a contractor has to do this, it doesn't matter whether we have a three-year or a five-year.
Well, I, I mean, but I don't want to make an assumption, and that's why I'm asking the question. Because it's not listed under the column with the five years. It is listed under the three, maybe four, maybe five.
Well, I don't, so where are you, where are you talking about that?
So the one is listed here in this column, which is three years with a possibility of another year plus one more extension. We're going under the unlimited solid waste collection service for five years. The one is not listed on that table. So my question is.
Oh, you're, you're, the one in parentheses, you're saying the one in parentheses?
Yes.
Okay. I, I, again, I'll have to ask our law director.
I would like you to.
You should have asked me that yesterday when you were there.
I'm sorry. I thought I had them all covered yesterday.
Yeah, okay, now, I, I see what you're saying now, and I, I'm pretty confident the answer's going to be, if it's required in the higher revised code, it's required, no matter whether it's a three-year contract or a five-year contract. And that's probably a misnomer in the contract, but I'll, I'll find out for sure.
And then for people that can't get it up and down the steps, I mean, I know Rumke doesn't want that probably widely advertised.
Right.
On the other hand, for our folks that need that, it's there.
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess it's, I guess it's gonna, it's gonna probably be pretty well-defined in that section, right, Jamie?
Yeah.
And I don't know, we'll, we'll have to look at it, because I don't think, you know, yeah.
This is a big section that includes a whole lot of stuff, so.
We can, we could get clarity on that as to what it means, but I, I gotta, it's going to be more than just, hey, I, I can't, I'm.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I mean, there's got to be, in the revised code, it's going to have to be defined, and we can get Scott to look at it.
So this part of the revised code is just the definitions. So 4503.44A1 is simply the definition of physical disability or impairment.
And what is that definition?
A1, person with a disability that limits or impairs the ability to walk means any person who, as determined by a healthcare provider, meets any of the following criteria. Then there's a whole bunch of criteria under it. So this just defines.
Yeah, but I would think that that's what they're saying. It's like, okay, you have to have, if you were to provide from a, a healthcare provider, a, you know, that meet these following things, and they submitted that to Rumke.
Right. It's just that revised code has nothing to do with requiring carryout collection service. That part of a higher revised, revised code simply defines.
Yeah, and I think that that's what this is saying, is that, you know, that it says that, you know, a resident with a physical disability which limits or impairs their ability to walk as set forth.
Right.
Which, I mean, as set forth or as defined or outlined in that section.
It just doesn't seem that ORC requires carryout service.
No.
So in that case, it could be a difference between three and five.
Yeah, I get what you're saying, okay. Okay. We'll get clarity.
You know, it's government, you can't assume.
No.
Thank you.
Yep.
So first reading on this one also?
Yeah, yeah.
I still have my objection to the dollar a month charge for the bin. The way I see it, we've got 2,000 residents, residences, right now, we've got over 600 of them that are paying for their own bin. Probably got 1,000 to 1,200 that don't want it. So that leaves about 100 or 200 people that you're gonna.
Wait a second, now, show, give me that math again. First of all, of the 600, that, 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 people could have multiple. So they have 600 bins, somebody could, you know, I know how Goody's has, they have 10 or 15 out there. So I don't necessarily, you can't assume that it's 600 individual residents. It's, it's, there's 600 being sold.
Goody's got the dumpsters.
No, they've got the.
They got, oh, they got the brown ones too, you're right.
Right.
But, I mean, in our 2,000 residences, we've probably got a lot of apartments there where they have dumpsters and they don't have cans anyway.
Right, but they wouldn't be charged for it. So we have 2,000 units that we're, we're charged residential pickup on.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and, and if they're not, they're, they're direct contact with, contract with Rumkey with dumpster.
So you're saying the 600 and some that are leased is the number of dumpsters, not the number of residences?
Exactly.
Okay, well, still, I, I don't think this is going to benefit that many people and it's going to cost everybody, so.
Okay.
My opposition.
Any other questions or comments?
Just, just some clarity on the cans, what you can put in the can, right? I mean, obviously, not only can you put your, say, your trash from your house, but you can put any outside trash also, even construction debris, if it's two by fours or something like that.
No, I, in a letter, there, there's things that are prohibited. Construction debris is one, hazardous waste, obviously, and.
Yeah, yeah.
Batteries. I mean, they outline what's prohibited that can't go into the landfill.
Right.
So construction material is included.
I don't mean like 10 sheets of drywall. I mean, if you got a, you know, a half dozen two by fours or something like that, that are scrap, I'm sure.
Yeah, it's any, it's any waste.
They've taken it from me.
Right, right, yeah. Any, yeah, exactly. As long as it's not, yeah, hazardous, it, it can go in there. So, yes.
So, I mean, that just gives people.
Yeah, you, you can put yard waste in there, you can put.
Yes, I was going to say that next, yard waste. You can put that right in there with your trash and, so.
Yeah. There's always a misconception with the yard waste. And sadly, you know, I know a lot of people still do the paper bags that they feel break down, but the garbage, the, the stuff that's picked up on the curb isn't going into any kind of composting. It's, it's thrown in with the garbage. So, you know, people like the paper bags, you know? If, if you're going to put them into paper bags and take them to the composting site at Rumkey, that's one thing. But, you know, when, when this all, there was a start, I mean, you, you know, it would, they would have had to bring another truck through the town to, to, to pick up yard waste separately. And that just economically didn't make sense for anybody.
Yeah.
So. Yeah, you know, and again, Mr.
My point being, you have more, you get a little bit more room for the one can, I guess, without it blowing all over the city, so.
And, you know, this is something that if we don't want in five years, we don't see an improvement, it can always be removed, you know? So I understand it. I mean, you know, at least when Ray and I talked about this, that was more the focus. What can we do to try to limit the complaints where people are saying garbage is blown up and down the street and everything? We have a conversation with Rumkey and the driver can pretty much tell you, well, this can't, this, these, these people put out bags, these people don't have, you know? And then it just kind of goes nowhere. So, you know, maybe it's not a, you know, it's. So I understand your position.
Any other discussion or questions? Okay, there's no first readings on resolutions. Old business. Does anybody have any old business?
We haven't finished with this one yet.
Oh, I thought we did.
We're gonna do, is this the first reading?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, I thought we were going to waive the rule.
Oh, no, 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 we don't want to waive it tonight.
Okay.
I'm sorry, okay. Old business. Does anybody have any old business?
I have a question. Mr. Coker, what's going on with the rewrite of, what is it, our zoning code that we're?
Yeah. The, it was, it was completed at the end of, end of last, the final version was, was presented back to me from the committee that's been working on it. And I, I got it to Gordon and Bill because they're the ones that are, and, and they've been providing input all along. They, they've provided recommendations as we've gone along. But I wanted them to see the final project, product on it.
Who is that?
Gordon Wong and Bill Knight.
Okay.
The zoning officials that are going to do it. And I don't know if you know, but Gordon had, has had COVID for a while, since Christmas and really was here last night and still struggling. So they just got back to me last week with their comments. And, and I talked with John, and some of their comments were very good, like, this is, this conflicts, this doesn't make sense. Some of the things, ironically, we talked about this the last time, was their opinion on some things were things like gardens in the front yard. They didn't think they should do that. And so I said to John, look, I understand their position, but that's an opinion. And I think, you know, the committee's worked on this. What we need to start to do is to, to note staff comments on things, like on that section where it's not, we're not going to change it back again, but we're gonna, we want to present to the planning commission and then the council, this is what the committee came up with. Here's some notes from the staff that, that may not, you know, may not agree. Because, again, not everybody on that committee agreed with everything, right? So, so I think it was real valuable to wait. So John's making those changes. There was a discussion of just getting some input, and I talked to Kim Kermans about this, getting some input from the business, or presenting it, not input, presenting it to the, to the, to the, to, to the Business Association because obviously another big impact. And again, and only if they said, this is the cra, you know, only if they came up with some kind of, really, we, again, we would probably not change it, but just say, hey, this was noted at this hearing, and then it goes to the planning commission and then it comes here. So it's something that's going to happen. You know, again, it's, it's, it's one of those things, too. We've, we've not pushed it through because we've struggled with, I mean, this process is supposed to be very, you know, input open to the public, public comment. You know, we have had closed meetings. So that, that's, that's, I'm not trying to make excuses. It's been way too long, I know, but that, those are all some of the things that kind of played into it. So. But hopefully, you know, we're, we're going to get something, you know, get it into council here in the next few months.
Okay.
Ms. Sheets.
I was rereading the report by, was it Greg Cutter, the Public Works Department? And he talked about that no snow emergencies were called in the 2020 winter season. Calling snow emergencies in the past has proven to be ineffective. Some heed the warning, but most residents ignore. What do we do about that? I mean, our streets, some of our streets are narrow and there's a reason that we, I assume.
Yeah.
There's a reason that we say that.
Sometimes we, it, it, it honestly, it all depends, you know? That's probably frustration of Greg, where a car isn't moved, they gotta play around it, you know, sometimes in the parking lots and things like that. I'm not, it's, it's, most people adhere to it and it works well. There's a few people that don't. But to try to find a tow truck at three o'clock in the morning during a snowstorm, you know, it, it, it just becomes an effort of futility. So it doesn't mean that it doesn't completely work. It gets some people off, but some, like he said, what was the exact words?
There were no snow emergencies called. Calling snow emergencies in the past has proven to be ineffective. Some heed the warning, but most residents ignore.
Okay.
So. I don't really know if, I, I would debate that a little bit.
Yeah.
I'm sure there's frustration on their part.
Right.
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
No, I guess.
Yes.
I guess, I think we have to be clear what's going on, right? We have signs up that say no parking during snow emergency and only in certain places, not on all the streets.
Right.
So there may be some, some misunderstanding on some folks' part as to what we're supposed to do during a snow emergency. So where, where people are still allowed to park on the street, you know, that, that could be a sense of frustration for the guys that are plowing. I'm sure that, sure it is, but, but that.
I can ask Greg, get, get this more, definitely.
I, I think we need to follow up with Greg and see what he means by that.
Yeah, exactly.
But I think most folks follow it. I mean, if, if they know about it, you know?
We do ticket, don't we?
Yeah.
I remember years ago, we had our friend.
Absolutely. I remember somebody we ticketed a couple of years ago. You're thinking the same person. Absolutely.
But again, it's not effective to remove the snow, though. You know what I mean? If we write tickets, you're still plowing around it, it's still problematic, you know? You know, I know, and I don't know if, he might be talking about parking lots too.
Well, there's, I think it was addressed. We attacked the city parking lots in business districts. So he didn't, in that, he doesn't mention anything about a problem with cars or anything like that, just.
I think he probably misused the word most. Don't you, I'd say that most do, some don't, but I'll, I'll get clarity on him from that.
Thank you. We haven't had many snow emergencies.
It's been a while.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, knock on wood. Any other old business? Any new business?
I just want to state that I will not be at the next council meeting. So I don't know if that has anything to do with voting for, to make it.
Ms. Sheets.
Will we allow people in since we're now out of purple, if we stay out of purple?
Well, we never really were limiting it because of purple. We were limiting it because the governor still has a, did he change? It was 10 people or less in the same area. We have more than 10 people in here now.
But I think he's changed that, hasn't he?
No.
I don't think so.
I don't think, I know, I thought he was only moving the curfew up to 11. I still think that, and we're still, that's not why we're not running out our community room, because it's still, the goal is to try to limit it to 10 people per gathering. So didn't anything to do with purple. So. But again, I, I don't keep up on, I know it changes, but, but even still, I mean, we, we need to get back to, to it. We're, I'm hoping that the, that, that those restraint, you know, are lifted somewhat. You know, if we get to 50 people or something like that, we, that would be very much more doable than, than the 10 people that are already in here.
Any other new business? I'm not going to do the adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, Ms. Dosa made a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Good luck.
Okay.
All right.
You gonna vote on it?
Oh, yeah. I thought I haven't done this for a while. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Meeting is adjourned.